Good morning councillors and staff and media. We'll kick off with the resumption of the council meeting on the November 30th. We have a quorum, so we'll get going. The first item, if you recall, we jumped about the agenda a little and ticked things off. So the first item is item eight, Friendship Drive Reserve Proposed Easements. Can I invite, I guess it's Jendy and Richard? Remember? I will introduce them.
Second.
Welcome. It's been moved and seconded. So I'll take that as some moved and seconded when appropriate. Thank you. Would you like to give an explanation or would you like to go straight into the questions? Straight into the questions. So councillors, questions? Oh, my, I have an apology and it's because I've missed the apologies. There are three apologies for the meeting, councillors Pete, Thompson and Bazet. I'll move that they be accepted. Seconding councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried.
It's a recon, sorry, Worship, I would have thought it was a reconvening of a meeting, we didn't do it again.
What, sorry?
A reconvening of the meeting, so we...
Yes, yeah, but they are apologies for the resumed meeting. Right, questions on item eight? Councillor Wilson.
Just on the costs, please, and I've seen how DOC deals with reserves over their property. You're comfortable that we have the policy on costs for easements over reserves in a manner that's consistent through other, and that we seem to do these things very cheaply as a city, whereas I know DOC charge substantially for easements over reserves, and I'm just understanding that you're thinking on that.
The council does have a policy for charging for easements over reserves, and so often the council does. In this instance, we're not planning on charging because it's come about through a subdivision consent. So in this instance, we were involved at a very late stage of the process, but in the future, our intention is to be involved much earlier on to make sure that these sorts of issues are captured.
The fact that the applicants in this case went through a process that required the easement, but if they hadn't negotiated access over the easement before the RMA consent, I'm not sure that that makes any difference, or have I misunderstood the situation?
We are in a situation where the developer has been given a subdivision consent that gives him access over these reserves, agreed that we are wearing a different hat in this instance, so it is open to the council to charge, but we would actually be charging ourselves here. Because it's an easement in Groce, it's an easement over a council reserve in favour of the council, so there's not a lot of point in this instance.
Further questions? Okay, the councillor McTavish.
I'm just going to move, Worship.
It's been moved and seconded, so it's been moved councillor Lord, seconding councillor Wilson, any discussion? There is none, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Now on to item nine, Botanique Garden Town Belt Reserve, proposed easements in favour of course, similar situation I suspect. Any questions on this one? Councillor Wilson.
Just my notes from last time, and I haven't absolutely reread this, but I'm just wondering, in this, we have difficulty sometimes with these people getting easements and then not providing services which could be to other utilities, and we're almost taking out the easement and they're not sharing the rights to using the same facilities which can be reused by others. Should we be requiring a condition in here that for any infrastructure that they put up as part of the easement, that they provide for that for the general public since it's at three?
With the easements, if somebody else came along to ask for a right over the council land, they would need to make a fresh application and at that point in time, yes, that would be a sensible thing to do. We would often ask that the services be aligned in the same easement strip.
Sorry, my understanding is that this is for a, this is going to be an alignment underground, but the infrastructure at the end is providing a service upper pole, isn't it?
This will underground services for the new propagation house and the bowling club.
But, so, okay, no, I'm sorry, I was thinking something was at the end of that point that was above ground? None of it is above ground.
It's all below ground.
Sorry, not appropriate.
And just to be clear, the easement documentation will specifically say that it has to be underground or at ground services, nothing above the surface of the ground.
Further questions? Councillor Lord. Willing to move. Move, seconding councillor Noon, are there any further discussion? Move councillor Lord, seconding councillor Noon. No discussion, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. On to item ten, exchange of Park Francis Street Recreation Reserve for Park private land. Questions councillors? Are you, you're sitting back councillor, councillor Lord, sitting back, I don't think you got that. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, we're telling you to move. Oh, you've got a question councillor Vanus?
Yeah. On page 10.4, under option two, the option to retain the reserve in its current form, it talks of disadvantages. These disadvantages seem to be for the developer rather than for the citizens that we represent. Could you clarify that a bit for us?
What is it you wanted me to clarify on that point, sorry?
Well, I'm wondering why the disadvantage listed is, it's seen as a disadvantage, but in fact, we're losing a bit of reserve which is a public good, and the disadvantage, if we were not to lose it, seems to me to be only for the developer, which I didn't think we were representing.
You're correct that the costs are developers' costs, but in this instance, we are trying to resolve an issue that has been long outstanding, and although here, the costs we're talking about are for the developer, what the intent is that at some stage that land will be available for subdivision and the council will be able to collect rates off that subdivided property.
So in option two, enlisting a disadvantage, the disadvantage then is for the long-term rates collection of the city in anticipation of a developer being able to subdivide that land.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, councillor McTavish?
Thank you Worship, my question just relates to 16 on page 10.3, and it notes that the commissioner suggested that the council should consider including a fencing agreement before transfer is complete, and I just wondered what the status of that is and whether or not that ought to be a condition that we put into the recommendations.
Yes, what we would do is, in the agreement for sale and purchase, we will put a fencing covenant specifically in the agreement, and that will record that the developer cannot come and ask the council for any contribution towards fencing. And in terms of the recommendations, it's the chief executive who's been authorised to finalise the details of the agreement for sale and purchase, so if you follow that recommendation, then the solicitors will draft the agreement to ensure that the fencing covenant is included.
Worship, thank you, I guess, I'm not sure, I don't think it's been moved and seconded, but I would move it with that amendment, so adding subject to a fencing covenant being included as part of, on the end of C.
You don't see a problem?
No, no.
Okay, I'll take that, I'll come back to you because there's still some more questions. Councillor Calvert, you have a question?
Could you just go over very briefly the costs to the council of doing this?
The costs will generally, will mainly lie in the survey and legalisation costs, because the piece of land that the council will be obtaining hasn't had a separate survey done at this point in time, and similarly with the piece that is to be sold, it will need to be surveyed. So the costs of that will be, we're estimating around $10,000, including the legalisation costs, so the costs of putting the documentation through Linds etc. We are yet to negotiate the exact proportion of who will pay that $10,000, but it's anticipated that we'll be negotiating on the basis of a 50-50 share, and in any case, we have got the budget for that $10,000 in the parks department.
Would it help our negotiation to say in our resolution that no more than 50% of the cost of surveying will be borne by the council?
Yes, it would.
Councillor Vanus?
Why would the council pay 50% of the costs of facilitating a private developer's development?
We're exchanging land, so it's good practice that we would share those costs.
I understand that we're exchanging land, but we're exchanging land to facilitate a developer's needs. Surely it would be appropriate for the developer, who is the net beneficiary, to pay for all the costs, not just 50% of them.
This whole issue has arisen out of a very longstanding matter, and we are trying to resolve this, and part of the history of this is that the council changed the designation or the classification on a piece of reserve land. So the developer is very firmly of the view that this is a situation where the council should be fixing this problem. So realistically, I think 50-50 is what is going to get us across the line and get us to a conclusion.
Okay, I understand that the designation was changed a very long time ago. Did the developer object or submit on that change of designation at the time? I mean, the DCC changes designations all the time, the second generation plan would be the most massive change of designation you could hope for, and I'm not wanting to set a precedent where everybody who's had their land, for instance, designated now flood-prone, slip-prone, native bush-prone, can then go to the council for 50% of any cost that might be involved.
I agree with you, the processes that we go through now are much more robust, but my understanding is that at the time, the neighbouring owner was not given the opportunity to speak.
When you say not given the opportunity to speak, were they not advised either?
We don't have the exact records, it was in the 1970s, as I understand it.
And the owner claims not to have known that the designation was changed.
That's right.
So these costs are in fact an attempt to write a process issue that we had back in the 1970s. Okay, thank you for fully explaining that to me.
Any further questions? Okay, it's been moved and I note that there is an amendment, you're seconding councillor Hall. Councillor McTavish, would you like to speak to it?
Well, I just wonder whether, I've just, in discussion with the chief executive, included the points that councillor Calvert has raised, but I wonder whether just waiting until Pam has had a chance to write it up, then it can be put up on the board.
Okay, that's good, thank you. Councillor Noon.
Just to point you Worship, I wonder whether we should be noting the report from the independent commissioner as well, although there wasn't a hearing, there is a report there attached to the agenda item, and it probably should be in the resolution as well.
Well, if the movement's changed, I personally can't see any downside to noting something that is, has been given to us and is relevant to the issue, so.
I think that's a very good idea and suggests that we include that as A.
That we note the, it would be added D, which we note the commissioner's report as well.
Worship, perhaps that could be the first thing that we do, make it an A.
Aye.
We'll put up what you've got, we haven't done new A other than to note the commissioner's report, we'll just work on that wording, but.
Right, so the highlighted pieces in C and E are the amendments that were added, and D, and A is the, at the moment abbreviated version of noting the commissioner's report, but it gives us the meaning of it. Councillor McTavish, would you like to speak to us?
No, thank you.
Okay, any other speakers? There aren't none, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Right, item 11, draft beauty therapist tattooist and skin piercing bylaw.
Worship, procedurally, are we not better to deal with that in the new meeting? So we have a paper on this in our new agenda? Oh, sorry, no, that's, yeah, this is the, sorry, yeah, different one, sorry, sorry, Ross.
I will indicate that, there is some relevance to that, I will indicate that I will be moving something under these recommendations, and I will be signalling that I will include the other two bylaw issues in that as well, so. Would you like to kick off?
Um, excuse me, the beauticians tattooist and skin piercing bylaw, this is due for its 10-year review. It's there because we've only got standards put out by the ministry, sorry, guidelines 17 years ago, however, under the Health Act, TAs are obliged to improve and protect public health within their districts. So we've had this bylaw running for 10 years, and it's got strong support from the operators, and the main current changes within the bylaw at this stage are recognising that we're having more mobile operators, we're having a lot of people going from door to door, for example, with hairdressers and beauty therapy, and they're not, within the current bylaw, we don't have anything that acknowledges that. We're also trying to look at evidence of staff competency, because the public have asked us for that, and also some of the operators as well, and we're looking at a risk-based approach, approach, sorry, to the premises inspections, because some of them don't necessarily need to do everything on the list that we've currently got to comply with the needs for health and safety. And inclusion of, also looking at cultural tattooing has been included in the bylaw, and an overall update of the current practices within the bylaw has been overlooked, looked at as well. Thank you.
Any questions, councillor Vanus?
On 11.1, number six, it talks about in the last 12 months, Birmingham Health have had 10 complaints relating to poor conduct of operators, health side effects experienced and unregistered tattooists. Can you give us an idea whether the health side effects experienced, whether any of those have been serious, whether they have involved transmission of a disease, for instance, or serious injury or something that happened as a result? I'm just wondering what really the intensity of the problem may be. We've had 10 complaints in a year, which sounds like quite a lot, I'm just wondering how serious some of those health effects might have been.
Tanya will speak to this, Tanya is an Birmingham Health officer that deals with these premises on a day-to-day basis. Of the 10 complaints, it's fair to say that the majority of them, approximately five, six off the top of my head, would be unregistered tattooists. Some of those complaints have come from members of the public, some have come from our registered tattooists at the moment, telling us about their knowledge of such persons operating without a licence, and in a questionable manner, shall we say. We've had, as a result of, for example, an unregistered tattooist, someone come forward to us who has contracted hepatitis C, and we did quite a lot of work with this particular complaint, in the hopes of being able to follow the thread, so to speak, and we wanted to work with the unregistered tattooists, try to get them registered, in the end, we couldn't actually prove an offence, but we worked quite closely with a lot of organisations, including the police, to actually try and have that come to fruition. Other examples besides the unregistered tattooists, we've had complaints of skin irritations, and without obviously identifying any complainants or the exact nature of their complaints in terms of body location, quite sensitive areas which have required medical treatment. Complaints have also been made about the competency of staff within unregistered premises, in layman's terms, not quite knowing what they're doing, therefore resulting in, and obviously an unwanted, unexpected reaction to the skin, so inflammation, bleeding, the potential for infection, so, and my serious complaint was the unregistered tattooist in relation to hepatitis C, but certainly overall with complaints, that there are serious health implications.
I recognise there are potential serious health implications. You said the hepatitis C incident, which would seem to be the most serious, wasn't actually proved, was this, is it possible that in fact it wasn't the contract, it wasn't actually caused by or directly related to the unregistered tattooists?
It's more than likely that it was, however, the nature of hepatitis C, in the absence of blood tests, for example, right before a tattoo and then following a tattoo, you can never 100% say, without that evidence, that that was the cause of it, however, when you look at a case history and we had multiple organisations involved, the medical officer of health also was involved, it is more than likely, but you cannot say 100% that that is the case.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Any further questions, councillors? Councillor Wilson?
Thank you Worship, and apologies for not flagging this earlier, but just in the interpretation on page 11.15 of this report, I wonder whether mobile, the definition of mobile licence holder has been transposed from somewhere else, and that mobile licence holder means any prescribed beauty therapy, tattooing or skin piercing process undertaken in an approved manner? I would assume it would be more a person that would be a licence holder than a process, so I just wanted to flag that, that doesn't seem to fit.
Yeah, certainly that could, we look at that as terms of wording, the intention of this is to apply this licence to a person rather than a premises, so this is your example of, I guess, a door-to-door operator, someone who might go direct to their clients to offer their service, so we can certainly look at the wording just to ensure we've got that correct, and that it's very clear that it relates to a person being licensed rather than a premises.
Any further questions? Okay, as I indicated, I will move, I'll move the recommendations, and I'm going to nominate as the hearing subcommittee councillors Pete, Wiley, Lord and Hall, and as I indicated earlier, I'm going to suggest the same group for the bylaws that are in the second meeting today, the, there's two others on dog control and animals. So, seconding councillor Staines, any speakers? All right, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Okay. Right, on to item 12, resolution to stop the portion of Chadwick Street. Ready to move?
Second.
Second. No questions? Councillor Vanus?
When this was, oh, sorry, yeah, when this was consented, how old were the buildings when it was consented and what was done at the consent stage?
Sorry, can we have the microphone? Can you hear me now? Yeah, okay. I can't tell you exactly how old the buildings were at the stage that the road stopping was initiated, but it was, they were relatively new. I believe that there was an issue with the, the boundary wasn't clearly defined in the construction documents, and they built a wee bit close to, well, over the boundary, I believe.
And whose liability is it when buildings are being built and there's a lack of clarification over the boundary? Is it the liability of the person building the buildings to ensure that they know where the boundary is, or is it up to the DCC to make sure it's demarcated properly?
It's generally the person who draws up the plans, who, the builder, the person that's doing the building.
And do you think it was just a genuine mistake on the part of the people building it, that they built it essentially too close or over the boundary?
I can't really answer that question, I don't know.
Thank you.
Further questions councillors? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? There is none, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item 13, resolution to stop portion of Bayview Road, questions councillors? Move councillor, seconding councillor Hall, no questions, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Thank you. Now I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we move on now to item 20, we have done, we covered the items from 14 to 19 at the last meeting, I believe, so we're down to 19, item 20, warrant cards 2014-15. Would you like to say anything? Are there any questions?
Second.
Move councillor Staines, second councillor Wilson, if there are no questions, is there any discussion?
Just one brief question, I noted that going through the lists, that there are quite a few repeats, there seems to be repetition of, say, on page 20.4, there's Chris Randall and Hedy Veldkamp, and then if you go to page 25, you get them repeated again, does that mean they get two sets of warrant cards?
Sorry, they'll have had a warrant for a specific purpose that was rescinded, and then a new one issued for a different purpose.
Okay.
So, and that's just, we are looking at how we record it, but at the moment, that's how the data was captured, so that's how we...
Right, now it's just that there's no... Just that there's no indication, if you look at the papers, that there's any difference in the two, there just seems to be a...
I agree, and we are going to review that for the next report.
Thank you.
Further questions? Right, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Okay, now, I believe that is the end of the public part of the meeting.
Bas Hat Design?
No, not yet.
We do it last time.
Sorry?
Oh, sorry, pardon me, apparently you did Bas Hat Design last time, I had to leave early.
Ah, yes, no, we...
Voice complete.
So, we're non-public now. Right, so I'll move the chair that we, as per the paper, that we move into non-public for the remaining items. Second to councillor Staines, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried.